Now for our land acknowledgement, we recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yum, Huacma, Carcana, Aloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Dr. Hurst, could you please take roll call?
Absolutely, President Gonzalez Hoi.
Present.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone, present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, everyone, I'm present.
Trustee Christian.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Phillips. Not here at this time. Trustee Kalip.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Cypress Sir.
Present.
All present at one.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Not at this time, sir.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to public comment. Ms. Munoz, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Whitney Griswold.
Hi again, everyone, back to talk about MRAD and advocate for compliance with MRAD. Just last summer, my family and I had a really great time accessing school facilities in the area where I live. I'm a mother to a three and a four-year-old, and so, as you could imagine, having a safe space for them to run around is really important to me, especially because there's a lot of speeding cars in my area, and also, we don't have any parks. So, this summer, when many more of the schools were closed and I saw padlocks on the gates to the schools, it was just extremely disheartening. And then, learning about MRAD made me even more frustrated with the situation, knowing that the public pays seventy-two dollars per landowner or on property taxes to ensure the public benefit piece of MRAD. And I really feel like all of our communities need weekend access to the schools in addition to after-school time as our right and public benefit, and just because we deserve that. I feel like there's been a lot of miscommunication, or I just have a lot of confusion around this issue, like what is policy, what is not policy, like why was I told, there's just been different people who've told me different things around status, and most recently, being told that the campuses won't open on the weekends for a few more years is just very disheartening, because that was something I didn't even know. And where has the funding been going, like the five-point-six million every single year, where has it been going? If during COVID, those schools were closed, like where was that five-point-six million going to ensure the public benefit piece? So, I really desire some more transparency around this, and will continue to advocate. Thank you for
Thank you.
Our next public comment is Cordell Handler. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, so, good evening, President Hoi, board members. I am Cordell Handler, and I'm a Richmond resident, so I have two things to say, so I'm gonna keep them within the one-two-minute period. So, number one, I felt that I was being misinformed, because, once again, every time I go to a sporting event at a high school, I have to purchase my tickets online, and I don't think that's fair, because you got people like me, they want to attend a sporting event at a school, but now, I remember back in the days, pre-COVID, people would pay with cash, but now, I feel that this policy regarding, you know, purchasing tickets online, I find that very unacceptable for two reasons. One, you have a lot of disabled folks that don't have access to to purchase their tickets online, so, that being said, I have, I've looked at other ways that like, you know, that that people can like, you know, pay, you know, they can use like a tablet to pay their ticket online, and then for the disabled folk, but people like me, we pay with cash, because every school has to pay, you got a lot of expenses that to pay, you got people that run the concession stands, videographers, and referees. They require, they wanna get their services, and so, I'm thinking that the district needs to figure out, they need to bring this, to bring a policy for it, because as residents like me, we wanna support our schools, but at this point, if my money is not being, you know, being considered, I will support the schools, but as far as like, you know, financially, that's not gonna be possible until come forward.
Thank you.
Our next public, our next public comment is Margarita Cárdenas.
One second, sorry.
Sorry.
There you go, you can start now.
Good evening. This is regarding transportation. I am a mother, single mother of two sons with special needs, and we used to have Ritz Brothers for transportation, and then, all of a sudden, this year, you guys chose an out-of-state service. I given them communications regarding schedules for both my sons, and they made a big mistake by not picking my son up at appropriate time, twice. I had to constantly call them, they made my son wait about an hour before picking him up. There was no communication, there was gonna be a sub-driver whatsoever. And with the other company, with Ritz Brothers, there was always communications, text, message, everything calls the mark of the name of the driver, even on sub-days. This new service, I am unhappy with them, they do not understand the schedule, and the communication is not very well, and I'm wondering why it was chosen an out-of-state service for special-need children regarding transportation. I really approved regarding Ritz Brothers over First Alts, and the service was much more better, the communication with management, everybody. And I felt unsafe with First Alts. The complete a hundred percent unsafe, even though my son was out of school, I felt unsafe, because my son was there for almost an hour, and the other transportation was a lot better, and I wish you guys would do a lot better communications regarding transfers, and I hope you guys consider getting Ritz Brothers back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ma'am, if you could please not leave, we need to, we couldn't read your name, so we'll have to just rewrite it, if it's okay. For, for following up. Okay, thank you.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, can you hear me? Because I'm using headphones, I'm at Kennedy High School right now. Can you guys hear me? Yes, we can. So, I am coming to you from Kennedy, we're having a meeting about the rebuild, and so, one, oh, I guess, thank you, I'm sorry, I guess I was talking too loud, I'm in the textbook room while the meeting is going on in the other room. And so, I am calling to talk about change. Everybody has a capacity for change. Young people have a capacity for change, grown folks have a capacity for change. And in these last two weeks, within my department, there's been a lot of change that we as teachers, we weren't a part of, and it is causing stress, emotional stress, for a number of our students, and I can only speak about mine. And I've been feeling like, and I communicated with my onsite staff, like, I feel like I'm a pawn. I feel like I'm a pawn on a chessboard, and I'm just kinda being dragged and dangled around like I'm expendable, because this change ultimately affects students, and so, I just wanna share, kids have a capacity to change, for change, adults have a capacity for change, and with us being in like the third week of school, fourth week of school, it's been a lot for all of us, and just moving forward, if there are things that we wanna do different within my department, can we have a collective conversation and discussion, because I'm the one on the front line when my student today had tears in their eyes because of this change, and how am I supposed to explain that to them when I have my own feelings about change as well? So, y'all know I'm a team player, I love everybody, just we need to do better with some of the communication in relation to what's been going on within my department, and so, last thing, last board meeting, something about the whole money we save with the bond, so, I don't know if that savings can come over to Kennedy for the rebuild. That's all I got, have a great night.
Our next public comment is Kimberly Chamberlain.
Evening, I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. We have had a good three weeks, not perfect, but good three weeks. We have a lot going on. The one big thing I would like to have everybody support us on is the educational benefits. Applications out there, please, please get that word out that we need to get those applications in. If you have a paper form that has been given to you, or you know somebody that is holding on to a paper form and not sure what to do, please have them contact my office at 510-231-1121. We would be happy to assist them. We are passionately trying to get all of these forms in. Right now, middle college has a hundred percent, so, thank you very much. We have most of our high schools at over seventy percent, which we think is awesome, and we are on that road. We do not have the privilege of not having this done. This benefits all of our students. It helps with our bus passes, it helps with our scores, and testing applications, it helps with students getting information for college, for hotspots, for tablets, anything that you can think of educationally, this benefits, especially the classified people onsite. So, your school community outreach workers, your clerk type is twos, your librarians, your athletic directors and coaches. Think of it, those are the people you are supporting by putting these forms out there. Please, parents, students, help us get those forms in as soon as possible. Thank you.
And her last public comment is Alon Harrison.
Good afternoon, board. So good to see you guys this evening. So, this evening, I would just like to talk about the ASAT Executive Committee in our APACs, where they are thriving and we do have district staff engaging them, there's some barriers that's been going on. Every year, our ASAT Executive Committee do not have our budget on what our children are gonna be receiving, what resources are gonna be supplemental for our children. I know we have a new chief financial interim advisor, hi, Ms. Moses, so she's over there. So, I would like for you guys to support us in being great advocates for our children and great advisors for our children by giving us the tools we need to make appropriate decisions with data-driven choices for our children. And I know you guys really would like to see the parents involved and equipped with the things they need so that we can make good decisions. So, I am asking, and a little bit demanding, that we have the resources we need so we can support our children fully. And thank you, Otharee, for encouraging us, in supporting us, and getting some of the things we need to make good decisions for our children. So, we're just asking for our basic needs that we need every year, and that's a budget, what the budget looks like for our children, where, when, and how we can advise on that budget, and also, what resources have been provided for our children last year, this year, and what's, what's working and what's not working, and why are you moving programs forward? Why did you dismiss some programs? And I'll save the rest for item C, number seven, since she asked me not to speak about it now, so thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, board, now we're gonna move to agenda review and adoption. There are no objections, the agenda will be approved. Okay, so approved. Now, we're gonna move to the minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes from, excuse me, July 12? Okay, without objection, we will approve the minutes from July 12. So, approved. Okay, now we're gonna move to item B9, resolution number 2324-16, recognizing Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month 2023. Ms. Sanders, I believe this is your item.
Thank you. Whereas Hispanic Americans such as civil rights leader Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta, U.S. Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, New Mexico Governor Susanna Martinez, former California Governor Ramaldo Pacheco, the first California governor of Mexican descent, California Attorney General Javier Becerra, Julian Castro, sixteenth United States Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, and astronauts Franklin Chang Diaz and Ellen Ochoa are among the Hispanic Americans who have made invaluable contributions to our society in social justice, civil rights, government, business, education, arts, science, sports, and the armed forces. And whereas the history social science framework for California public schools states that the history curriculum of the community, state, region, nation, and world must reflect the experiences of men and women of different racial, religious, and ethnic groups. And whereas this California State Board of Education recognized in its multicultural educational policy that each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and the West Contra Costa Unified School District proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, 2023, as Latina, Chicane, Hispanic, and Afro-Latina Heritage Month, and encourage all educational communities to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities, and be it further passed and adopted by the Board of Education of the West Contra Costa Unified School District on the sixth day of September, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Okay, board, I'll move that we approve resolution number 2324-16, recognizing Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month 2023.
Smith Folds, second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from anyone? Okay, let's move to our voting. We'll start with trustee Kalip.
Kalip, yes.
Trustee Cypress Sir.
Cypress Sir, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
And I'm a yes, passed unanimously with one absent. Thank you so much. Okay, now we're gonna move to consent items. Board, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull? Okay, without objections, we will approve the consent calendar, or consent items. So, approved. Okay, we're gonna move now to item D, Superintendent Communication. Dr. Hurst, I'll pass it on to you.
Absolutely. While we're bringing up the report, we just wanna share that we have also Liz Sanders, our Director of Communication, she's gonna be speaking about our attendance campaign that we have going on, why show up, why we show up, and then, we also have Mr. Booker that's gonna be giving a COVID update as part of the superintendent report. So, if we could bring that up.
And Ms. Chamberlain, if you could start heading up, you're gonna be called in one minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next slide, and we're gonna turn it over first to Ms. Kim Chamberlain from Memorials.
I can't read the screen, so I'm not sure what it says up there, but I am going to be speaking this evening on a very passionate person that taught us quite a bit in the school district. Her name was Sandra Falk. Sandra Falk was one of our greatest advocates for students and labor unions. Sandra was born in Juliet, Illinois, she moved to Richmond, California. She attended all of our schools here in Richmond, California, graduating from Richmond Union High School in nineteen sixty-four. She graduated from San Francisco State in nineteen seventy-six, magna cum laude. She held a lifetime credential from UC Berkeley. She had certificates in labor. She attended Hastings School of Law. She was, she was an advocate. I spoke with many people regarding her, and she taught, she taught at Mount Diablo, she taught at West Contra Costa Adult School at one point. She was in the U.S. Department of Labor. She was at John F. Kennedy University, Diablo Valley College, San Francisco State. She taught me. She taught most people that are advocates for our district that are involved with labor union over the years, how to be passionate about the students in West Contra Costa Unified School District, Richmond Unified School District. She she was a collaborator, advocate, confident friend, as some said to me. She didn't see in black and white, she saw in beautiful colors for the, all the world to enjoy. She fought strongly for all the students, staff, and community. Sandy advocated for all of us to have a better life through teaching. Her passion for organized labor and making sure every person was considered at the table spread to all who worked beside her. She was a huge advocate for a program that we have in the district, for all the labor unions in the district called Solutions. She sat at that table and made sure we found solutions to make this district a better place. She brought many of us together and told us that we had to speak to one another and not fight at the table like children. And we did, we learned how to communicate with one another and became stronger advocates for our students because of it. You couldn't go against her very often. Every once in a while, you'd get that phone call, and you, she'd say, I've been thinking, which automatically meant you were going to be volunteering or voluntold to doing something for the students in this district or the community. When she was at the table for negotiations, she would be talking, and Ms. Moses, you would be passionate about this. She would go against many people, and she'd have her little calculator, and you knew right then and there with a chuckle that you were gonna lose. She was right, and down to the minute penny, she was going to teach you. She was selfless in all her ways. Her children, Carolyn and Paul, shared her with us all. Her grandchildren, Robert, Megan, Jennifer, David, Denise, William, and many, many great grandchildren shared her with us. Many of them have come to work in the district and gone through our schools also, and we are very blessed for having them. The best thing I can say is we lost a friend and an advocate for all of us, and I will sincerely miss being able to get that phone call or make that phone call to her and say, hey, Sandy, what do you think about this, or how should I handle this? And she says, well, I was thinking about that when I heard something was going on, and she'd have the answer in that small conversation. She was very passionate. Thank you. We've also lost another member of our community, Ms. Ruth Cashmere. Ruth was a very passionate person for our students. I had the privilege of meeting Ms. Cashmere when she worked at adult education. She and I came into adulthood at about the same time, in two thousand and five. She was a wonderful instructor for our older adults. We were very lucky to have her up there. She then changed roles and went into school community outreach worker, or a SCOW, as many of us call them. She was very passionate at Pinole Valley, and I would say I worked very closely with her over the last two years with our educational benefits form, and found that she was very communicative to her family and her students at that school site. She will be a great loss. Thank you very much for your time, and I do appreciate everything you've given us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chamberlain. We also want to recognize and regret to inform you that Lois Curtin has passed away. Ms. Curtin retired from WCCUSD in nineteen ninety-seven. She was hired in nineteen eighty-six as a payroll clerk. She returned to work after her retirement from the district as a substitute clerk in the benefits department. And we just wanna share that our thoughts and prayers go out also to the Curtin family and friends during this difficult time. We're gonna pause just to remember these three, Lois Curtin, Ruth Cashmere, and Sandra Lee Falk, if you could join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. In our next slide, we would just wanna highlight our college and career department led by Dr. Allison Huey under the leadership of CAO Sonya Neely Johnson. We know that in our district, we have ten industry sectors that are represented throughout all of our high schools, our comprehensive high schools, and also Greenwood. And we just wanna highlight that at Richmond, we have seven industry sectors that are represented. At Deanza High School, we have four industry sectors represented. At El Cerrito, we have two industry sectors. At John F. Kennedy, we have five industry sectors represented. Hercules High School, two industry sectors. Pinole Valley High School, two industry sectors, and at Greenwood Academy, we have one industry sector. And what you see here in your, on the screen, is teachers from California Collaborative at Kennedy High School, at the Buildings and Construction Trade Lab, so we wanted to highlight them. Also, you can see some Pinole Valley High School students, the Spark the Future event, we wanted to highlight Pinole Valley, and their industry sectors, and if we can go to the next slide. Here, we have Deanza High School students, they're sitting for patient care exams. And then, also, Kennedy High School, you have the IT department interns from the Kennedy High School IT Academy on the job. So, a nice job highlighting these industry sectors in these schools. Next slide. So a nice job highlighting these industry sectors in these schools. Next slide. We're also really excited about this opportunity that's coming up um in collaboration with the Board President and the Clerk. We met with both of them and shared this proposal. This is in draft form right now, but we're really excited and we're gearing up for this opportunity. And it's a city schools tour proposal. Uh, we would like to really have the Board of Education engage in this opportunity to engage with our cities. We're really working with our five mayors and our city managers as well as the unincorporated areas. And really designed to build relationships and foster strong communities as well, connections. We really want this to be in early October. Uh, we have a tentative date of October the seventh, but again, we're gonna run that by um the board. Let's see what they um think about that. Um, we want to again, as I shared, we want to invite um County Supervisor, we want mayors to be part of this. Uh, we want city managers, superintendent, of course, board members. Uh, and then also certain district staff will be part of this. And if you think about what we really want to do and the purpose, we really wanted to have, what the Board President wanted to have an event where we invited all of these partners and city officials just to tour our schools so they could see the exciting things that is happening. Um, and as you think about the schools that are listed, they're represented in each of the areas. So you could see there's the schools and from area one, two, three, four, and five, we have Aloney Elementary that's gonna be visited, Pinole Middle with West County. Then we have Betty Reed Soskins. There's a planned luncheon that's gonna happen at Betty Reed Soskins. Uh, Deanza High as well is gonna be visited. Lake Elementary and also Harding Elementary. And the schools were selected specifically on a focus that they have, just so we can highlight uh these areas of these schools to these city officials. So again, we're really excited about this opportunity to show off the exciting things that's happening at our campuses in each of the areas. Next slide. Equally, we're excited about uh planning for the state of the schools breakfast. This will be my first state of the school breakfast since I've been here. This is going on my third year. And I've seen some samples of what has happened in the past, and we're in the process of building a vision about what's gonna happen for this state of the schools breakfast. But we're really uh looking at the location. We haven't pinpointed that yet. Um, we're looking at a tentative date of October twenty-seventh. Again, this is draft. We'll run these about the board. Um, but also we're looking based on the structures that I've seen from two thousand and six to two thousand and nineteen. Uh, there's a welcome, so we'll make sure we'll have that. Uh, we'll have food services involved in this as well. Um, introductions from the Director of Communications, welcomed by the Board President. Um, and again, if he wants it to be in this order, that'd be certainly up to him and the board. Then we'll have the state of the schools addressed by the superintendent. And this will be um an in-depth presentation where we get to highlight what's happening in all of our departments and the state of the district and all of our departments within the district. Uh, then also we recognize that there was a portion in the other structures where we recognized community members and community partners. Uh, so we have um some themes that we're thinking about um aligned to our work. Who are our bold partners or bold leaders specifically? Specifically, we want to highlight those partners that are working to improve and remove health barriers, but also all barriers to learning for our students. And another theme that we're thinking about are brave minds, specifically recognizing those partners who are supporting our students to access rich college and career-ready opportunities for learning. And then um also thinking about a press conference and also some extras uh with a photo booth opportunity. So again, we're excited about these two big opportunities and we're gearing up and planning for these, and we'll be coming back to the board uh with more information at the next board meeting, but we wanted to highlight these. Next slide. So I'm gonna turn it over to our Director of Communications, Mr. Liz Sanders.
Good evening. Um, we're very excited to share with you um some updates about our attendance awareness campaign. We will continue to talk about this campaign all throughout the month of September. September is Attendance Awareness Month. Um, and it's really important to us that as we're promoting attendance and consistent attendance at our schools, we're doing that in a way that celebrates our community um and celebrates the ways in which we show up for each other and that showing up is more than our physical presence here. Showing up is a mindset, showing up is a habit, and showing up is something that we do to establish belonging together. Um, so you will be able to see the voices of our students and staff all throughout our district over the coming month. Um, we have a quote from one of our students to kick us off here. Um, I show up every day to care for my friends and for the community that I've built. So that's our theme of this campaign, which is why we show up, um attend today, achieve tomorrow. And as a district, we'll continue to share the reasons that we show up to school so that our students see us show up with them and for them as we strive for improved attendance together. Next slide. And I actually want to turn it back over to Dr. Hurst just for a moment. Um, he is kicking us off with some of the reasons why he shows up, and then I'll share a little bit more about this campaign.
So this is really exciting. Um, as Director Sanders has shared, um, this theme about why we show up, it was really an opportunity for me to think about really why do I show up uh to work every day? I just really thought deeply about this and they were able to capture some thoughts and uh they also put out a video and it has some other thoughts on this. So I just wanted to show up, uh share with you why I show up to work every day. Uh, so one of the things that I said uh was I show up to WCC USD every day to work with committed people to ensure we design a system that allows our students to achieve their goals. And I really do believe that it at the end of the day, it is about our students and making our stu- our system better for our students so they can achieve their goals. The next thing I said is I show up because I get to work with great minds with a common purpose to make education better and fun for our students. And as I thought about this, I thought about all the individuals that I have the opportunity to work with uh on a daily basis, from classified members to certificated staff, to our leaders and managers and executive team. We have some really great brilliant minds in this district. The great part about it is I get to come to work every day to talk with all of these great minds, um to have a common purpose to support and serve our students. And not just make the system better, but to engage with our students and so it could be fun for them. And then lastly, I shared, um I show up to serve our students. It's my purpose to serve the next generation of achievers and to provide leadership and support to our staff. And for me, I think I've made it very clear since I've been here that um the most important people that I serve are our students. Everything I do is for our students. So that's why I ultimately show up. It's for our students. Thank you so much. Turn it back over to you, Liz.
Thank you. Um, next slide, please. We want to credit the origin story of this theme. Um, I know many of us who are part of these board meetings um consistently hear from one of our very dedicated educators who calls in regularly to make sure that we know why she shows up. And that's Ms. Maisha Gash at Kennedy High School. And so we felt deeply inspired by hearing consistently um the voice of consistent attendance. And we really wanted to amplify that across our whole district um as we support our students to see the supportive community that they will be part of as they show up consistently with us. Um, so Ms. Maisha Gash is one of the voices that you will see throughout our community as you see these advertisements. Uh, Mr. Felder at Richmond High School is another one of the staff voices that we're showcasing. Um, he's given his reason here. I show up because I refuse to let the next generation down. Um, we want to make sure that these voices are throughout our community. And we tried to really think about where are our students and our families when they're not in our schools with us? Um, and how do we make sure that we strategically reach them and we use our district resources in a really smart way as we do that? So you will be seeing the voices of our students and communities on our district vans. And I want to thank the partnership of our business services team um and our maintenance operations team and our food services team for supporting the use of their vehicles. Um, we will be outfitting these vehicles tomorrow and Friday with um these quotes from our students and staff that will be throughout our communities um and driving around and sharing their voices um with our communities throughout this month. And there will be other ways in which we will see their voices and be amplifying student and staff voices um about consistent attendance throughout the month of September. Uh, we will share much more um when we come back at our next board meeting about this campaign. But I just want to thank um our uh recruitment and retention team and all of the folks who have really lent um innovation and creativity and care for our students to this campaign as we kick it off.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. And now we'll turn it over to Mr. Booker.
Good evening, Board President, Board Trustees, and Dr. Hurst. Today, I'm gonna update you on our covert response to this date. Next slide, please. We continue to focus on the health and safety of all our staff and students. Um, so when we consider our guidance, we have to look at a few different things. Uh, we had looked at the current uh guidance. Our, the guidance was based on the state and federal emergency health order. That is no longer in place. Additionally, we continue to consider local, state, and federal guidance, and we'll respond accordingly if this changes at any point in time. Next slide. We still give guidance to our uh principals and staff members uh with regard to onsite uh positive cases. Simply, if you are sick and you are testing positive for COVID, you should stay home. If uh you are testing positive, uh, the recommendation is that you stay home for five days. And after the fifth day, you can return to school or to work without a test or without a doctor's note. If you have multiple tests or multiple people testing positive, uh, we have uh given our principals guidance with regard on how to report that. If you remember last year, we had uh a number of people on our covert uh tracing team and our group tracing team. We no longer have those folks uh to do this tracing. And it is no longer a requirement. And then finally, if you are testing positive and you are not on the site, you stay home. You stay home. And if you are non-symptomatic, uh, you can return after the fifth day. We have also given the county's guidance grid to those principals uh that they should uh follow the guidance that the uh county is currently giving. The only requirement that we have as a district is that we report our, we have notifications to employees who have tested who have been exposed to positive cases on site. Uh, there is a letter that the staff can use, and that is only for employees that have been exposed to COVID positive cases. And like I said before, if there is an outbreak which is considered three or more at a site, uh, there is a spot reporting uh portal that they can go to the principals and report these. Once the county has this information, they will contact us uh with resources and uh with further guidance. Next slide, please. And for those who aren't familiar with the SPOT Portal, it's the shared portal for outbreak outbreak tracking. Finally, the exposure. This is the definition for exposure. Persons who have sent, spent a cumulative total of at least fifteen minutes within a twenty-four hour period in a shared indoor space with someone with a COVID pos- positive case uh during an infectious period. There is no longer close contact, so the within six feet no longer applies. Next slide. So what we're telling people is that we are still considering guidance, but without the emergency health order, we can no longer mandate folks in certain areas. Uh, and we are still telling people, if you are sick, you stay home. Uh, if you have been exposed, uh you should test within three to five days. You should also rec- or wear a mask uh for a ten-day period uh based on the exposure from the positive case. And so with that, I would open it up for questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Booker, Ms. Anderson, Dr. Hurst. Uh, Board, does anyone have questions? We're gonna do three questions. I'll win the comments for the report, but for later on, the other items, it'll be two minutes. Uh, we'll start with Trustee Phillips. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm not attempting to hit the hornet's nest, but I may with this question. While I understand the issues around mandating vaccination for school districts, are you saying that there is literally nothing that we can mandate regarding COVID?
That is correct. Uh, there is no emergency help order in place at the state or federal level, and they have since rescinded the vaccination mandate at at for the state of California.
Are we gonna do comments?
Not for this item, but we'll have comments later.
I'll ask a question. Is it possible to check with legal counsel regarding what we can and cannot mandate? For example, you don't have to ask if we can mandate vaccination. But you might ask, can we mandate mask wearing? Just like we can do dress codes. Um, because I suspect there are some things that we can mandate, but it's figuring out how to do that within the bounds of the law. And there are some things that we clearly can. So if you can check, can you? That's my question. Can you check?
Absolutely, sir. And I can send that response to the entire board.
Okay. A couple of years ago, I was talking about this like right before COVID started. Um, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but for another example, could we require students if we wanted to for them to wash their hands before they ate their lunch? Is there anything against the law? This is, we couldn't do that. And if there isn't, and I doubt there is, but maybe there is, I don't know. But if there isn't, um, how do we think about things creatively that we can do to improve health and safety in our district without crossing lines? So I think you get where I'm going.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else have any questions? Clerk Smithfords?
I don't disagree with what we just heard, but can you Google it before you ask a lawyer? We spend way too much money on lawyers. So can you Google all this information first and then ask a lawyer? I'm complete.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for the report. Um, and thank you for following up with us on those questions. Um, okay, everyone, now we're gonna move to our first discussion items. No, I'm sorry. We're moving to our action items. You, we're moving to E one, which is our technology plan. And I believe Ms. Logan, this is your item.
Good evening, Board. All right. Good evening, Board, community and colleagues. I am delighted to be here this evening. My name- My name is Tracy Logan. I'm the Chief Technology Officer for the district. And I've served in this role for the last five years. Pre-COVID, during COVID, and then as we're transitioning out of all that we've learned from distance learning. All that we've learned about what technology can do for us for learning, teaching and working. And I'm excited to present to you this evening our proposal for a three-year technology plan for the school district. Next slide, please. I want to be clear that this technology plan is not something new. It's built on a strong foundation that that precedes me years, decades in the making. It's the reason that when COVID hit us, we were able to respond so quickly. With Chromebooks for students, with hotspots, with infrastructure. Because so much of this work had had been done before. And so I would be remiss to say that this is something new and different. What this plan really lays out is taking that foundation, going deeper. Innovating further and continuing the great work that's already been done. Next slide, please. So attached in the board agenda and before all of you this evening is the actual proposed three-year plan. I'm not going to go through every single page of that plan because it's rather dense. Instead, I'm going to pull out key elements of how did we get here? Why are we doing this now? And what would the work look like over the next three years? I want to give a special shout out to Kyra Brown, our Strategic Projects Manager and Communications. For both how beautiful this plan looks, for the formatting, for all of the hours and support that she put in. To really help this plan come together. Next, next slide, please. So why a tech plan? A tech plan, it sets priority for for our technology work. Align to our mission, to our vision. And most importantly, to our graduate profile. This is how we started this work. We talk with students. What needs to be true? If you're going to leave our system with these skills, how can technology support you to do that? How does technology get in the way of doing that? So it's a plan that sets priority. It also helps us update and align our board policies to make them current. To make sure they're innovative and sets the tone for the future. And lastly, but very important right now is it allows us to go after other funds. So for the last three years during COVID, we've used a fair amount of one-time dollars. Those dollars are going away. We're using the last of them this year. We're going to use every penny wisely. And then we will need additional funds. We will need funds for Chromebooks for students. For. Learning at home, continued access to learning from home. Cybersecurity is a topic that has grown in demand, in complexity, and continues to do that every day. And it's expensive. And we want to continue to have strong infrastructure and resiliency. So we look to. The approval of this plan to go out and help us to continue to grow and build our robust technology plan. Next page, please. So our approach to tech planning, as I mentioned before, started with student need. So in January, we had a secondary student focus group. We listened to students. We sort of pick their brains around what's working, what's not working. What could be different? What would really move the needle for you in terms of communication, collaboration, learning? And we took that and then we invited folks to be part of our planning team. And we met four times, March, April, May and June. And then we did a final review with additional folks in July. We intentionally created a process that allowed for people in the room to have voice, but also people outside of the room to have voice. So folks who are part of the committee took feedback, went to others, brought feedback back. With the intention of really demarginalizing that design. So it wasn't just the people in the room who had. An opinion and had an opportunity to give voice. And then there were iterative feedback loops. Next page. In your plan, you'll see, I think it's page 16. Will list out all of the folks who were involved in the process, students, teachers. Our site and central leaders, paraprofessionals, clerical and classified staff. Family members, folks from around the district and various schools and neighborhoods participated, whether it be. Showing up to the meeting, student focus groups, our own student trustee, thank you. Also participated and provided feedback and input on this plan. And I do just want to take a moment to say again, this is not. The Tracy Logan Plan or the Technology Department Plan. This is really meant to be. A thoughtful, inclusive plan to serve all of our students over the next three years. And thank you so much to everyone who gave their time and their hearts to invest in developing this plan. Next slide. This is a quick wordle of all of the words in our very first focus group that we heard from students. Not surprising, technology is right there, big smack in the middle. But I think the other words that really stand out are purpose. Everyone, difference, easier and learning. I think students really. In in one short meaning captured the essence of the role that technology can play. To make learning accessible, to differentiate, to meet students where they are. Regardless of their learning abilities and accessibility. Next slide. And so out of that listening and learning and the research that we did, we developed five pillars of the plan. Each of the five pillars that you see before you have three-year strategies with year one actions. This year being year one. So the first is equitable access, making sure that students have access to learning. 24/7, whether they're on our campuses or at home, because so much of learning is online, we have to make sure we provide the tools. Two, teaching and learning, making sure that teaching and learning really maximizes and uses the power of technology. To engage, to differentiate, to differentiate. Three, digital life. Digital life was a big topic that came up in many of our meetings. It largely relates to balance, balance for students between being online and being offline. How much to social media is too much social media? How do you, how do you? Be really conscious of the digital footprint that you're creating and leaving? So all of those digital skills that we learn throughout our lives to make sure that we're safe and engaged. Four, operations and cybersecurity. This is our nuts and bolts, making sure that we have solid platforms, solid infrastructure, that they're secure. That they work, that they're automated, that we're not doing a ton of manual fix, that they simply work. And we don't hear about it because it just works and it's in the background. And then last but not least, accessible student data for decision-making. Making sure that the data is available, that it's accurate. And that folks know where to find it and can use it to take action. Next slide. So just to call out a couple of the key strategies in each area for equitable access. Continuing our one-to-one program, strengthening it and ensuring that it's sustainable. Providing 24/7 access to learning. So this year, we are transitioning from student hotspots, so students having a second device along with their Chromebook. To eSIM-enabled Chromebooks, so one single device that does the same thing. So trying to streamline and make the access easier and simpler. And then last, family digital literacy skills. So this looks like not just digital citizenship for students and for staff, but for family members. How do parents, guardians, family members support their students with learning online? How do they have the digital skills to understand and be able to support? And what's our role in doing that? So there's, there's an opportunity through community schools to partner with outside agencies that can support us to do this work. Providing refurbished devices to students, helping families get connected with home internet at home. And then learning the how-to piece of digital literacy. Next slide. Teaching and learning. So here is one of our Prometheans in action, tech integration model classrooms. So how are we leveraging those bright spots across our district? Right? We go into classrooms and we see teachers and students doing incredible things where kids are engaged. The learning is rich. How are we taking those models and making sure that every teacher has access to know how to do that? What that looks like, what that feels like and how to replicate it and share across. So really partnering with our colleagues in teaching and learning in our walkthroughs to to see that in action. And create opportunities for folks to learn. Again, engaging every student. With technology. And then last, professional learning. So continuing our technology teacher leader program. Which I will also mention that five of our new site administrators this year are former TTL. So it's a leadership pipeline in our district that we want to continue, that we want to promote and that we want to deepen. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, digital life, so that really the importance of positive technology use, what does that look like? Cyber awareness. And then students as digital ambassadors. So how are we engaging students more in this learning? And championing what that looks like to be a user of technology in a positive way. And then last is the family digital health education. So along the lines of healthy mind and body, which is one of our graduate profile. Skills. Partnering with Contra Costa County Office of Ed for additional digital health. Series for families as well as common sense media, particularly focused on our youngest learners, our pre-K and TK. Next slide, please. Operations and cybersecurity, we want to streamline, continue to integrate, continue to automate, reduce the amount of manual. Build up our infrastructure so that it's resilient. If something goes down, we've got something else that stays up so that no one experiences downtime. It just, it's just constant. And then part of our strategy to get there is to continue to grow our own. So in our IT department, we're about 38 folks strong. 30% of our IT staff are WCCUSD alum. 8% tiny but mighty are graduates of our ITA academies. And this summer, we had three summer interns from Kennedy. Who worked from the ITA Academy who worked with us. That we will continue working with to build out a student tech squad to continue to grow the pipeline and grow our own. Next slide, please. And then the last category is the accessible student data. So really this year, the focus is edge a climber, as you've heard before. So one platform with multiple measures. That allows access first and foremost for teachers, for admins. Certainly publicizing on our public website so that data is accessible to everyone. So that we can ensure that data is accurate and then it's actionable. And then next slide. So that's our proposal for a three-year plan. We intend to have an implementation committee. That committee would look at what it is we said we were going to do, how are we doing? We'll have data measures, implementation measures, as well as outcome measures. And then we will report back twice a year how we're doing and we will shift course as we need to. And I believe, next slide, please, that's our last line. Yes, thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Logan. First, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Alan Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Could we please put up the one minute up? Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Logan. And I just would like to thank the district for adding equity. You guys haven't mentioned a lot of the things you've done where you include the parents. But Ms. Logan has been including the APAC and parents to some of this work she's done. And I just want to thank her for that. And we do still have a lot of more work to do to ensure that this works equitable. Equitable for everyone. But thank you so far for what you've done. I'm complete.
Thank you so much for calling in. Oh, sorry, one more. Go ahead.
Our next public comment is John Evans. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, am I audible?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name's John Evans. I'm school librarian and teacher technology leader at Helms Middle School. I just wanted to voice my support for the technology plan. And also to point out that digital life is to me, one of the most important aspects of it. So I'm extremely happy that the technology department forged a plan there. As educators, it's our job to prepare students for college, career and beyond. And there's no denying that these days, technology is a major, major part of that. So teaching them to use it safely and responsibly is absolutely something that I am looking forward to figuring out how to do correctly. Alongside of them. And I think this plan is a a great starting point. So I just wanted to voice my support for that.
Our next public comment is Zoom user. Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Hello, my name is Josh Sussman. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you repeat that?
My name is Josh Sussman. I'm a district parent, a child development researcher at UC Berkeley. I was on the committee. I just want to thank Tracy and everyone else on the committee for facilitating a great. A great committee and coming up with a really strong process. I, you know, I certainly recognize the benefit of, of, you know, technology in classrooms. But, you know, on the committee, I was kind of the Mr. Doom and Gloom guy, you know. And I just want to, you know, I want to just prompt everyone listening to consider. Both the positives and the downsides of technology. When you, as a district, make the decision to to put a tablet in an elementary school for his hand. You change that that kid's life, you change the dynamic of the family and you have responsibilities. And so I'd like you to think about this in terms of the rights and responsibilities of parents who you give these tablets to. I'd like you to think of whether, you know, processes are educationally relevant, you know. Is everything that a child is doing on a tablet relevant to education or not? And so I'd just like to ask, you know, so my last question, do parents have a right to know what their child is doing on the tablet? You know, formally, the answer right now is no.
Thank you so much. Sorry.
Thank you. No problem.
Thank you for calling. Thank you so much for everyone who called in. Board, now we're going to move to questions from all of us. Does anyone have any questions? Trustee Reckler?
I don't need to go first.
You're the only one who raised their hand, so you might be the only one with questions.
Okay. Okay, so thank you very much for the presentation. So. The page that was the most important to me. Was page 21, which is the appendix for the student jam board. And the one thing that jumped out to me immediately was we have 86% of the students that participated. In this are spending. Between 50 and 100% of their day. On a tablet or Chromebook. So. Is there ever too much technology in a child's life?
Good question. And I realized too, we should have qualified that the the jam board session was all high school students. So I think that is also important for context. It's not elementary students. It is secondary students. But these are conversations that we're having with leaders, with teachers. And you heard a parent that called in too around being really thoughtful about when we use technology. We shouldn't be using it all the time. We should be thoughtful. We should be strategic. We should be intentional around how we use it. Now, I will say that a lot of what once was non-digital has become digital. A lot of our communication with teachers, grading, right? We use Google Docs for almost everything and a lot of feedback happens in that way. So we we are quite reliant on technology and certainly at the secondary level, it's prevalent. Should it be used all the time? Absolutely not. Should it be thoughtful and intentional and have a real purpose? Yes.
So how? You, Dr. Hurst, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Neely Johnson, so. What are your recommendations or how do you intend to ensure that this this tool? Tools are used thoughtfully and with intention?
So to just reiterate, but Ms. Logan talked about. Technology is here and is here to stay.
Technology is here and is here to stay, but we do need to look at a balance, right? And so um, integrating some of the technology tools that we have. But also um, taking time to, you know, utilize. I would say books in our classroom where students can read, highlight some of those things that they do. Um, especially, I would say wrote. Um, specifically like highlighting information. It helps to reinforce. Taking notes also helps to reinforce. Typing the notes helps to reinforce. So really always sharing those strategies with our teachers on how to balance. Also too, I would say sometimes we look at technology just as a tool. But sometimes we may show a video as a way to um, generate interest or share knowledge. So technology can also be used in that way. And I know on many of the learning walks that I've gone on, I've seen um. The technology used in that way as well. But I would say we would not want students spending so much. I would say all of their educational experience or their educational day. Using just the Chromebook. And I'm sure some of our student trustees could also probably share how they integrate. Or how our teachers integrate technology. And I would say going back to paper, pencil. Reading, writing. Et cetera.
That's three questions, right?
I think that was two.
Okay, no, but it's three total.
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. So then the last one is. Um, where does cybersecurity? For the rest of the organization exist? Where, where is that plan or that responsibility? Um, and I'm talking about financial, you know, security. I'm talking about hacking into student records. Um, the city of Baltimore being, you know, hijacked by a hacker. Where does, where does that body of tech responsibility live?
Oh, that's a great question. So I would give a multi-pronged response to that. I would say that technically, the infrastructure resides with the technology department. That is my responsibility to be sure that our systems are working, that they're patched, that they're secure. That we monitor, that we respond in a timely way. I think the topic of cybersecurity though is a complex one. Because it's not just the technology and the tools that could be as secure as you want them to be. And if the human behaviors aren't doing secure things or we're not doing things thoughtfully. Take phishing, for example. Phishing scams are getting more and more sophisticated. Uh, it's easy to, to receive an email. It says it's from Dr. Hurst. You don't, you don't scroll over the little from to see. This is not actually Dr. Hurst's email. This is somebody pretending to be Dr. Hurst. You download, you infect your computer. Or you click the link, you give up your credentials. So it's mostly the human, I won't say mostly. But it is largely the human behavior pieces that we have to be really, really thoughtful about. And do a lot of educating, awareness building and practice. We have an email address in the district called unsure@W C C U S D dot net. We let folks know if you are ever suspicious about an email that you get, don't click it. Forward it to unsure. That goes to a team of my staff. They review, they make sure something's safe. If you did something that was not safe, they counsel you as to what needs to be done. We've also invested in software called Know Before. Which the city of Oakland also purchased unfortunately after they got hit. Um, where it is user awareness building software. It simulates phishing attacks. We send it out. You don't know that it's a simulation. You get hit by it, but you actually learn in the process because you get an email that says, oh, shouldn't have done that. And it, it teaches you along the way. Plus it gives us the analytics so that we can tailor the education. So I would say that it's a multi-pronged approach and it's not just the responsibility of the I T department. It's the responsibility of all of us. We talk about this on executive cabinet, the importance of cyber awareness. October is, is that month, so we'll be doing a, a big awareness campaign. But we'll keep it going throughout the year because it's something that we have to continue to learn and grow. And get more sophisticated as the cyber attacks get more sophisticated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Smith Folds, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Um, some of my questions are, they go right along with what trustee Reckler said. But the first one is about transition. So how do you take a teacher, staff member, parent, community member, who's the Flintstones? And then move them to a Jetsons? Because I'm a Flintstones when it comes to technology, right? So I'm married to a Jetson, but I'm a Flintstone. So how do you take me and move me with very little struggle? Over to the side of technology is here to stay. This is how you do it safely. This is the benefits of it. This is where you can come to it and get all of these wonderful things that everybody else is. Because at this point, my kids out technology me, right? They can do things that I don't even know about. So how do you get from point A to point B?
That's a good question. I think first, it's just, it's meeting people where they are. It's meeting people where they are and trying to understand what is it that they're trying to do? What do you care about? What's meaningful to you? And then tapping into that, well, here's a way that technology could help you do that thing. So it's not just you should do this, but what is it that you want and need to do? And so what are some of the tools, the resources, the strategies tech, tech wise that would help you get there? I also think in what I see in classrooms, I think the Prometians are a great example of. There were many teachers who said, I don't want this. I don't need this. My projector on my cart works just fine. And I'm sure there's some who still feel that way and that's fine. That's where people are. I've also seen teachers who let it come into their room. Some of them tried it out. We're like, oh, it's not so bad. I can figure this out. I've got this. And um, got very quickly confident. Or students would hop in there and show them, try things. I think giving people the space to try things, to tinker, to mess up. It doesn't have to be perfect. Learn a little bit as we go is really the approach to help move folks along.
Thank you so very much. My second question is about the whole student. So what are we doing when we talk about technology fatigue? What are we doing when we talk about eye strain? What are we doing when we talk about isolation? What are we doing when we talk about the misuse? Are we talking to physicians about this is the proper number of hours or minutes that this age group should be on technology? Like, are we looking at? The technology and the technology plan in a um, a holistic type of way? And what about the blue glasses, right? Are we thinking, okay, well, maybe kids should get the little blue glasses so the screen is not right in their face? Are we thinking like that about our students?
It's a good question and I, I honestly think we need to continue to do more. Um, I think it goes partly to trustee Reckler's question around when is, is too much technology, too much technology? And where do we draw those lines? So I think we need to continue to rely on the research, to look at science, to be that, to be part of the data that informs. Our plan as we iterate and go. Um, and I, I just wanted to add something to Ms. Neely Johnson's comments about. How we use technology and teaching and learnings. I think so much of what we look for, it's not also quantity, it's quality, right? So are you using the technology just to sit there passively and get information? Or are you using it to create, to build, to, to really innovate and learn? And these really interesting ways that stimulating your brain to do things, to do things that. Which is not to say technology is the only way to do that, but it can be a really powerful way. Um, so I think those are important factors to, to look at and address as we go forward.
Thank you very much. My third and final question is um. Money. How much is this costing? Where is the cost coming from? Have we cost things out? What happens if we completely have zero money to invest in a three-year plan? What does the plan look like at that point? Does it stop? Does it, do we still have things that are free inside the plan that we can still do? Where are we with the, the cost of it?
Yeah, I would say that investing in the plan as it is now. We will be able to do with the dollars we know that we have. There's a spectrum, right? There's some that, some things we can do cheaper, some things we could even do free. And some things that are really gonna cost money. Um, so as we get a clearer picture of our budget over the coming years, we'll be going back to this plan. And then saying, okay, so on that spectrum, are these the things that we're gonna do on the freer side? Are these the things that we're not gonna have general fund dollars to do? So I need to pound the pavement and find some investors to fund this because we've said that this is so important. Um, but I would say at its base, these are things that we're already doing to some degree now. So we've already committed and invested. And we will be able to fund and do to some degree. Over the coming years. I hope that makes sense.
It does. Thank you very much. President Gonzalezoi, I'm complete.
Thank you. Okay, um. My only question, uh, I, I think from my observation. Our T T L initiative has been one of the most successful initiatives that we've implemented in this district. When it comes to training the trainers. What else do you feel like your department needs to continue to expand? This initiative or this program from the board and from the district?
I think the support, I mean, certainly funding, continuing to fund um, those positions. The infrastructure exists. I think we're getting better at it. The structure for supporting T T Ls and how they support their fellow teachers. I think has gotten better and better each year. We've had different areas of focus and different ways for folks to come together and learn and then take that learning back. Um, so I, I think I would just say a continued investment and commitment in the T T L program.
Thank you. Okay, board, um. Would anyone like to, do you have a question? No, are you making a motion? Would you like to make a motion, trustee Phillips? Go ahead.
I move that we. Adopt the W C C U S D technology plan twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty-five, twenty-six.
Smith Folds, seconds.
Thank you. Uh, board, does anyone have any comments? We're gonna do two-minute comments. We'll start with um, trustee Phillips and then we'll head this way. I saw you pointing for Adam to go first. Uh, would you mind putting up the clock, please? It's two minutes. Thank you. Go ahead, trustee Phillips.
Thank you, um. So first, I want to say thank you for the presentation. I also want to say thank you to everyone who has continued this work over the years. Sometimes it's front and center. Most of the time it's not. But it is something that we rely on uh, as an organization. And truthfully, it's not just the kids that rely on the tech. Uh, it's also the adults. Right? And if we don't have uh, a robust tech plan. Uh, we are not going to be able uh, to fulfill our mission, uh, to be frank. And not only are we not gonna be able to fulfill our mission, we're not going to be able um, to um, move forward. Uh, as aggressively as we would like. I really like um, this presentation. And you know, folks say that there's nothing new under the sun. And it really isn't, right? It may look a little different. Uh, it may sound a little different. Uh, but like uh, Ms. Logan said, this is not new. Um, this district catches a lot of flack uh, for a lot of things. Uh, a lot of it is warranted, a lot of it is not. Uh, but one thing that this district has done uh, is this district has blazed a trail. As far as technology is concerned. And we have been out front, uh, not just in this area, uh, but in the state. Um, and we have benefited from that and we should continue that. Uh, the last thing that I'd like to say with my last few seconds is this. What also is not new is this committee that uh, Ms. Logan is talking about. We had a tech committee uh, and it served a purpose and it was a good thing. I would encourage us to have at least one board member on it like there used to be because it added value. I think I was the last board member here actually to serve on the tech committee. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Trustee Reckler?
Yes, thank you. I have a lot to say. First, I want to say thank you. To you, your staff and the people who participated in this work. This, this is outstanding. It is just the right amount of information. It is accessible. It's not written in jargon. It is clear. I mean, this is really amazing and I think that you should do the strategic plan. Very honestly, the same group I think should come back and finish out the strategic plan. Um, so thank you. And you don't get the credit you deserve. And things, technology, it runs like almost clockwork here. And it's really a testament to your team and what you fostered. So thank you very, very much. Now, I also want to be clear that I, I am concerned that this, that this happened outside the umbrella of the district's strategic plan. That we should have a strategic plan and technology as a tool should fold under it. I'm glad you didn't wait, but I also have some concerns about that, like are you fully aligned? Um, so you know, I just, and I wish that the board member had been on this to see the work. So we got assigned the implementation, but I think we would probably be a lot more interested in like how the plan came together. So that's something to think about for the future. Um, you know, I'm, I'm fine, you know, I think the board is fine with the touch points of how it got in. But also, you know, how it was formulated to me is much more interesting. Also, coming back to page twenty-one, which I think is the most important page in this entire document. And what students are telling you about what they want to know. And I'm gonna run out of time, but is there a required course that we need to teach all students? Financial literacy? Tech is a tool in financial literacy? I mean, I'm glad that you caught that, but there's a blur between ed services and, and tech on that. Also, the role of A to G courses, reading complex literature. These are all things that tech enables, but this is a bigger conversation. Um, and so I'm out of time, but I'm gonna email in some more comments, but thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yeah, I just wanna uh, echo the same words. This is a great plan that's well put together. All we got to do is follow it now, you know, and put it to work. Um, but this is great. Uh, thank you guys for putting this together, you know, and the hard work that you have done. And so we just gotta follow it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Smith Folds?
Thank you so much. I just want to ask you to continue to be gentle with us who are moving to. Technology as a whole part of our lives. So that, and that includes our teachers, our administrators, our community members, our parents. So be gentle with us and take us with you on this ride of technology. Also want to make sure that we are always looking through the equity lens. When we're dealing with technology, so that includes the Wi-Fi that you were talking about. It includes making sure that everyone has access to, we have one-to-one tablets and making sure everyone can turn them in if they break them. Make sure that they have them when they're going from, understanding that they may leave them at mom's house when they're at dad's house. So what does that look like? All the little nuances that go into being locked into technology. So just make sure that we keep that in mind when we're talking. Also remembering that. If we increase one thing, we need to increase the other. So if we're keeping them on the tablet more, we need to get them outside more. So how do we balance that? How are we ensuring that we're keeping the whole child in mind? So I think that your uh, committee in your department are doing an excellent job. I would ask that you just keep in constant communication with the board and have a backup plan. If the whole world falls apart again. What does it look like? If the whole world falls apart again and we don't get any money, what does it look like? If the whole world falls apart again and we get a whole bunch of money again, what does it look like? So just looking at it from a uh. Airplane view and on the site ground view would be my offering. I'm complete.
Thank you. Trustee Cal?
Um, I would just like to say thank you for the entire presentation and um, I think, and I've, and, and everyone who is included into this technology plan. I'm overviewing it. I'm glad to see how you were able to incorporate student voices into this. And then I was over here talking to Anaya about it also, about how um, you're able to be so heavily influenced on hearing other people's input. And then I especially enjoyed how you were also able to um, kind of think back on like things that you've done in the past. And how you want to kind of put that into this new technology plan. For example, with the hotspot of instead of having it into two, incorporating it into one and kind of building it more from that. So that's something that I'm, I'm really interested to see future on as this plan goes on. And then basically, yeah, I'm excited, I'm excited to see more of what up comes with this plan as the years go on.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Uh, for my comments, Ms. Logan, thank you. Um, uh, you know, I'm a big fan of your department, but I want to specifically call out the work that Ms. Roberts does with the TTLs. I mean, when I visit schools and I talk to teachers about technology, they're like, oh, my TTL helped me develop this. Like, I think that it's, I mean, I'm sure there are pockets that where that does not work. But mostly I hear that it's really positive. Um, so I'm a big fan of that work. Uh, I hope that we can continue to develop it, Dr. Hurst. So if he, obviously, you know, you have my support, obviously, to continue that work in future years. But um, how can we also replicate the work that you've done in your department with TTLs to potentially other departments in academics? Or uh partnering with Ms. Neely Johnson on curriculum, because that has been obviously so successful, right? So that's a, um, challenge I want to propose. Um, I'd like to define a board member in your committee moving forward, if it's meeting, uh, definitely let's talk about that. Uh, and let's appoint someone who'd be interested. Um, a, a challenge for us on the board, you know, when whenever we talk about. Challenges with funding, which we are in the middle of that, some of the first things that we usually see go are arts and technology, right? So the challenge to us that I propose to you all is how can we go through the challenge we're going to go through next year, but not cut technology? Because it is such an incredible resource for our students. We have been pioneers in this work. I think in the state for a long time and um it helps us in so many different ways. So I don't put that challenge forward because I know that the money has not just gone away that we've been using. But obviously, as we're looking at cuts, that we don't look too deeply in this. As obviously we're implementing increased use of technology. Um, and I would love to hear just more of the story of how are we going deeper on sites that are not utilizing technology? Um, if it's not, you know, being pushed by a great TTL or a great principle. Um, what are we doing as strategies to, to push for that? But thank you so much. Okay, Board, let's move now for our vote. We'll start with Trusty Cal.
Calip, yes.
Trusty Cypresset?
Cypresset, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trusty Christian?
Yes, Christian, yes.
Trusty Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trusty Phillips?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Now we're going to move to action item E two, which is our provisional internship permits. Uh, Dr. Johnson, I believe this is your item.
Yes, thank you, thank you, um, President Gonzalez White and good evening, board members. Um, our first item is in reference to this item allows district to hire teachers who are entering an internship program.
There are questions or comments?
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Board, is there, are there any questions? Okay, does anyone have a motion?
I move provisional internship permit.
Thank you.
Reckler, real second.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. We'll start with Trusty Cal.
Calip, yes.
Trusty Cypresset?
Cypresset, yes.
Sir, I apologize. I said your name wrong. I apologize for that. Uh, Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trusty Christian?
Yes.
Trusty Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trusty Phillips?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously. And the next item is E three, resolution number. Two-three-two-four dash one-seven, exception, exception to the separation of services employment. Dr. Johnson, I think is your item as well.
Yes, thank you again. Under current ed code, retirees are re, are required to wait one hundred and eighty days. Before they can come back and work at a school district. So this would remove that requirement and allow our retirees to come back and serve our students sooner than the one hundred and eighty days.
Thank you. Are there any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Or are there any questions? Clerk Smith Folds?
How soon can they come back? So a hundred and eighty days is a school year. How soon can they come back if this is passed?
There is not a specific timeline when they can come back in the resolution.
Thank you, I'm complete.
Thank you, uh, Trusty Reckler?
Uh, thank you. And just to finish up the second part of that question, is there a limit to the amount of time that, that um? They may um come back for service?
The, the amount, the number of days that they are allowed to return is also not listed on this resolution.
But there's a law, correct?
Yes, and I can get, and I can send you the exact number of days.
I, I don't need it. I just want to make sure that we are in compliance. That's all.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more questions. So uh, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four dash seventeen exemption to the separation services employment.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Trusty Cal?
Calip, yes.
Trusty Cypresset?
Cypresset, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trusty Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trusty Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trusty Phillips?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Pass unanimously. Thank you. And then our last action items, certificated board authorization education code four-four-two-five-eight-point-three. Dr. Johnson, is this your item too?
Yes, it is. Thank you again. This authorizes school districts to assign credential teachers to teach specific. Subject matter based on um their um transcripts.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Uh, Board, are there any questions? Okay, I can have a motion, please.
I move certificated board authorization education code four-four-two-five-eight dot three.
Say it, say it.
Thank you. So anyone have any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Trusty Cal?
Calip, yes.
Trusty Cypresset?
Cypresset, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trusty Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trusty Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trusty Phillips?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Uh, now we're moving to our only discussion item, which is F one, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium in California Healthy Kids Survey. Um, Ms. Neely Johnson and Ms. Smith, is this your item? Actually, there's a lot of people.
I have our um team here today. So we have Dr. um, Gabe Chilcot from Educational Services. And um, who is, he's the director of CNI and Assessment. And Morgan Matthews, who is our director of research and reporting. And our director of climate, LaShante Smith. They're going to be providing an update on our preliminary Sback data. We will be getting, you know, more specific data in October. But we want to keep the focus on teaching and learning and just give you some preliminary updates. We'll also be talking about um climate and wellbeing as well. And so um, without further ado, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Ms. Neely Johnson. Um, and thank you, Board, um, for allowing us to come up and talk about some of our preliminary uh data. I'm going to go through and speak about the academic data or some of our academic data. Um, before uh Ms. Smith comes up and talks about climate data. Next slide, please. Actually, it's a placeholder, so the one after that, please. So initially, I'm going to talk about Sback uh English and Language Arts. Um, our data guru, Morgan Matthews, calculated the preliminary data using EduClima. So this is another exciting uh use of our new EduClima platform. Um, it's really helping us out in a number of ways. Um, and I also want to reiterate that this is preliminary data and is not yet official. Or at least the twenty-twenty-three uh data that is on there is preliminary and not yet official. Um, so the first thing that we noticed is we're looking at seven years of data here that goes over the pandemic and the closure of school. There is a drop of one percent um in seven years. But again, that does cover the pandemic and um we have a one percent increase this year. In uh the Sback English Language Arts data and all of our data does show um increases from spring twenty-two to twenty-three this year. So next slide, please, is the math data. Um, the math shows an increase of two percent from spring twenty-two to spring twenty-three. Um, again, this is a seven-year uh change and there is a negative one percentage point over that time. But again, that does cover the uh, the closure of schools. Um, and we have a two percent uh increase in uh math proficiency data this year. Also, just to say it, this slide looks a little bit different because the two non-Sback years are included. So you can see twenty and twenty-one in this one as opposed to the other one. It's omitted from the visual, but it's the same data set. So the California Science Test, um, it was new to us right before the um, the, again, the pandemic and the closure, but there's a two percent gain. Um, so in our three largest academic indicators, we show an increase from spring twenty-two to twenty-three. So that's positive data. Um, and before we start drilling down, is there some more specific bright spots? Um, in the data, I want to share the frame that we use for looking at our data overall across the system. Next slide, please. So we're using um the Street Data Frame um by Shane Safir, um, that came out in her book, Street Data. And so I'm going to walk through this a little bit. So satellite data um is Sback and other important. But they're far removed from the classroom data sets. Um, you learn something from the Sback scores and they're important. But they're too far away in summative to drive instruction effectively. You really can't build uh tight cycles of inquiry around summative data. And so we need different levels of data to truly understand the student experience. Street data is student experience. One aspect of our work that I'm going to look forward to speaking to you about previously and it will be in upcoming board memos. Is our integration of the Instructional Practice Guide or the EPG. We're working to create common observation protocols across the district. And this will allow us to norm around how we're looking at and measuring student experience data. And uh driving principals and other educators to having conversations around instruction using common language and um data. And then map data is the middle level. I'm going a little bit out of order on this. Because I want to highlight that iReady and EduClima are big additions to our map data. Um, so we're excited to improve in these uh areas and how we're able to provide map data um to you. Who and to schools and really look at and interrogate um instructional practices and um how that is moving the needle with a student. Um, um improvement. So these are all valuable, all these different levels. But we do want to talk about sort of the different levels of data and how they're interrelated and as a district. We need to do a better job of articulating how all of our data fits together and leads to the actions that we take to improve instruction. Next slide, please. And now we're going to talk about some bright spots. Um, so we're committed to learning about our successes. Uh, when and where they are happening so that we can increase achievement and interrupt inequities across our system. Um, and one way to do that is to really interrogate the data and look at some of the um positives that are coming out in that data. Um, to try to capture some of those practices that are leading to improvement um and spread them across our district. Next slide, please. So some data wide, again, I will um highlight that this is preliminary data. Um, there may be some change once it becomes official, so I just want to say that again out loud. Um, district-wide, eleventh grade ELA scores increased by six-point-one percent from spring twenty-two to spring twenty-three. Um, that's a really great improvement, six-point-one percent of ELA in eleventh grade. Fifth grade math scores increased five-point-three from spring twenty-twenty-two to spring twenty-three. And seventh grade math scores increased three-point-seven percent from spring twenty-twenty-two to spring twenty-twenty-three. So these are some of the district level highlights. Um, I do want to say, excuse me. Um, all the highlights, we're using um the three percent increase as our cutoff, like is what we're, we're highlighting out. So it's going to be a three percent or above increase over time.
It's going to be three percentage points.
Thank you. Three percentage points. Um, yeah, I'll have to stop saying that. All right, um, not percent. Got it. Um, so here are some of the, oh, next slide, please. So this map is really cool. It shows you the bright spots across the district. So I'm going to highlight the schools that had a uh increase of three percentage points or above um in uh ELA. Between spring twenty-twenty-two and spring twenty-twenty-three, I'll move north to south. Uh, just it's hard to see up there. I want to make sure that everybody hears that. So O'Looney had an increase of four percentage points, Lupine Hill, five, Penole Middle, four percentage points. Stewart, four percentage points, Bayview, three, Verde, four, Middle College, eight, Richmond High School, twelve. Grant, six, Coromatsu, eight percentage points, Kensington, four, and Harding, six percentage points. Um, so these are some of the bright spots that came out of our initial look at the preliminary data across the district. And it really does show just how all over the district there are um great practices that are leading to increases. In our uh summative satellite Sback scores. So for math, um, O'Looney had a four percentage point increase, Lupine Hills, five. West County Mandarin, ten, Hercules Middle, three percentage points, Penole Middle, three, Montalvan, five. Stewart, three, Bayview, three, Verdi, four percentage points, Downer, four, Grant, six. Kensington, four, and Harding, an increase of six percentage points from spring twenty-two to spring twenty-three. Um, so these are, uh, again, great bright spots spread across our um, our district. It's schools that look very different from each other. They really indicate a lot of the hard work that's happening in our district to improve student outcomes. Now, we wanted to dig in a little bit deeper than that, and so we use those bright spots um that you saw there on the map. To reach out to some principals to talk about, okay, we see these increases, we see these bright spots. What's happening at the school that's making that happen? So one of those um schools was Highland. So Highland uh had English language learners who scored proficient or above on, on Sback doubled from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three. Um, that was an increase of six-point-eight-five percentage points to fourteen-point-two-nine um proficient in ELA. And from two-point-six to fifteen-point-four-eight proficiency in math. Um, those are big jumps. And I've been talking to the principal, um, it was around, um, she highlighted that it was focused on meeting students where they are by grouping by specific need. And then engaging in targeted instruction and moving them as they progressed. So what that means is really targeting the instruction and moving students in and out of groups that were targeting those gaps in their knowledge that. Um, you know, in those small groups focusing on those uh, those target areas before moving them on. Also, they had a bilingual aid support that was extremely beneficial for their ELL students. And they had a multicultural literacy night where each student was provided with a book to read and bring home. Um, so I, I will hope that you, uh, you get further. Uh, perhaps we could bring out the uh principals to talk more deeply around some of the practices that are happening at their schools. But we wanted to highlight a couple of these. So Montalvan, sorry, to increase this, the, next slide, please. Montalvan increased ELA proficiency uh in fifth grade from thirty-two percent to fifty-one percent. Increased math proficiency for all students from seventeen percent to twenty-two percent. Um, and increased math proficiency in seventh grade from six percent to thirty-three percent. Um, the principal there uh highlighted the school-wide use of the IPG, um, which is the Instructional Practice Guide. That we're really trying to roll out to all principals and sites to focus on rigorous instruction through classroom observations, goal setting. And focus professional development on instructional strategies. Their, their school-wide focus was on student voice, which is core action three D um growth. And they had, and the growth on the IPG from one-point-three-three, this is the rubric scoring to three-point-three-three in February. So by focusing on this specific strategy and instructional practice, they were able to be able to increase. The frequency of that strategy being observed in classrooms. And so it's really linking the different levels of data and to the practice in the classroom. And then the pictures of a fifth grade student in Miss Sorcerer's class, math class, showing productive struggle, struggle using. Instructional strategy of vertical non-permanent surfaces to solve a math problem together. Um, so pretty cool. Uh, kids excited about math, talking to each other. This also goes to how we can utilize technology where you might have a lesson that's online. But really what's important is having those students talk to each other around the work that they're engaged in. Uh, Coromatsu had a ten percent increase in African-American students proficient or advanced on ELA and Sback. Um, and uh, the principal of Coromatsu highlighted the flipped schedule. Um, which is so students, they rotate the schedule so that they're not going to say their math class is either in the morning or the afternoon. Every single day and this student is one who, you know, perhaps is having trouble sleeping and therefore in the morning isn't engaged. Or by the afternoon, their brain is full and they're not as engaged. By having these core classes shift times throughout the day. Um, they're able to uh have students in those classes at different times when they may be able to better engage with the instruction. So also they had ongoing Monday faculty meetings focused on equity, so really focusing on how they were going to support all of their students. And they purposely focused on ensuring that African-American students have attention from staff in order to make them feel welcome and supported. Um, so really stopping and engaging with specifically African, I mean, across the, the school, but engaging with their African-American students as check-in. So really stopping and engaging with specifically African, I mean, across the, the school, but engaging with their African American students as check-ins to make sure that those schools, those students were feeling supported and welcome. Richmond High School, as I highlighted earlier, had an eleven percentage point, see, I changed that one, eleven percentage point, oh, you did, increase in students who scored proficient or above an ELA on S back from twenty two to twenty three, from thirty one point seven one to forty three point two eight. The interim principal now highlighted the history and ELA department collaboration, that there were teachers looking at question stems on STAR and S back and analyzing student data. These collaborations on integrated question stems and higher order of questioning that they folded into their daily lessons within their grade level. And then they engage in student work analysis protocol to assess student progress in, as well as using ethnic studies framework for high engagement in the content. So this collaboration between history, really focusing on language across the ELA classes as well as the, the history classes they saw as being integral to their improvement on that. And with that, I will, next slide, please, we'll pass it to LaShante Smith, who will talk to you about school climate data. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gabe. Good evening, Board President, Superintendent Herson, Board. I am excited to be here tonight to talk to you about our data from our California Healthy Kids Survey. And I'll just jump right into that. So the first thing we want to acknowledge is that we had an increase in our service response rate. And why this is important is because we want to make sure that we're hearing all of our students' voices across our district related to how they feel and how they perceive school climate. So our student response rate nearly doubled for our third through eighth grade students. Our family and parent response rates also increased as well as our staff response rates. Next slide, please. So locally, what we are seeing, and I want to preface this with, we're just sharing a synthesis of the data that was received so far, and we're continuing to analyze and look at bright spots and also areas of improvement across our district. And to also highlight the best practices that are going on across the district so that we can replicate those practices. So the first thing that we see is that we are seeing the greatest area of need for improvement and meaningful participation. So some examples of questions that are asked on the California Healthy Kids Survey is, are you given a chance to help with deciding class activities or rules? Or do your teachers ever ask you about what you want to learn about? Those questions, again, are tailored toward grade levels, but those are the kind of questions that are asked. And what we saw as a district, that in meaningful participation from our elementary, our middle schools and our high schools, that was our lowest area or greatest area of need. We also know just that the research, that meaningful participation has some clear parallels to attendance. And so we do want to focus more in on that meaningful participation for our students because we want them to show up. But we also want them to show up to spaces where they feel like they are included and that they are able to participate. Next slide. So as far as our middle school data goes, for caring relationships, meaningful participation and perceived school safety, we have a slight growth from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. So we didn't decline, but we didn't increase at a significant rate, or we didn't have the increases at the rate that we want to see. And again, I already talked about meaningful participation, but again, that was an area of need in our middle schools. Next slide. So an area of excitement, at least I was excited, and I hope you are all excited, is that in high schools, we showed some significant increase across all of our areas. So across caring relationships, school connectedness, meaningful participation, and more particularly, school safety. So if students feel safe at schools, we had an eight percentage point increase in perceived school safety. I believe that's percentage points. And then we also had a per, an increase in school connectedness. And caring relationships is important because that is the question that asks students, is there at least one adult on campus who I feel care about, cares about me? And so we know that there is clear correlation between caring adult relationships and how students are able to come into campus spaces and then feel connected. And then connectedness can also lead to perceived school safety. So they all work hand in hand, and so we did see some increases across our high school. This year was the first year that we wanted to really look at student well-being more specifically, looking at some key mental health indicators. So we added the social and emotional mental health indicator portal, or not portal, module to our California Healthy Kids Survey. And what we found is aligned with what we're seeing across the state in our students' report in frequent sadness and students who have considered suicide. Next slide, I'm going to go back and talk more about this. So for our mental health portal or module, we found that fifteen percent of seventh graders statewide have considered suicide and fourteen percent of seventh graders in West Contra Costa Unified School District have considered suicide. And what we're seeing is that this is definitely shocking and it's something that we wanted to highlight and point out because mental health is real and it's important for us to de-stigmatize mental health and really think about, think about it as a part of holistic wellness. So mental, mental health is just as important as physical health, and we want our students to be able to report out if they aren't feeling like their best selves. And it's important for us to de-stigmatize that. So with that, we have had an increase of students who advocate for themselves and request mental health services. And we have that awareness that student mental health support is a continued area of need on our campuses. Next slide, please. So some of our strategies in response to what we're seeing is that we are deepening our capacity and our training and implementation of climate and safety teams. And I've come and reported out many times on the role of climate and safety teams. But I want the board and community to understand that our climate and safety teams are intended to be preventative and responsive. So the prevention piece is that at a school site, when you're seeing trends and you're seeing different behaviors on campus, what are we doing and what kind of plans are we putting in place to prevent behaviors from occurring? And then if behaviors do occur, how are we responding? So prevention and response is what you'll, you'll be hearing me say a lot, but that is the role of our climate teams. And we're continuing to provide support to those teams to ensure that they're implementing core strategies and key strategies, if you will, with fidelity. We're also expand, expanding our clinical services this year. Like I said, and as you saw in the data, there is a true need for mental health services across our district. And if you all didn't know, mental health clinicians are, we're kind of having a shortage right now. So even some of our community partners are not able to hire clinicians. So we're having to think really creatively and really strategically about how we are allocating resources to our sites that don't currently have mental health support. And we're expanding those services this year through a grant that I can share more about at another time. We're continuing to provide ongoing training to our staff so that, again, they can build their capacity to implement tier one social emotional learning practices as well as other means of correction, especially restorative interventions. Because we have twenty two schools who have received community schools funding. We're really trying to ensure that community schools don't lay or, or not just over here, but that we're really integrating the community school strategy as part of our strategy in West Contra Costa Unified School District to support the whole child. This year is our first year that we've been able to hire climate coaches. So each of our climate coaches have four schools. Those four schools are a part of the community school grant. And their work is to really work at the school site and help the site and the leadership and the climate and safety teams implement and monitor the implementation of different behavior, positive behavior practices, as well as the implementation of the PBIS framework. And they'll also be supporting sites, more specifically, the community school directors with data analysis and school-based action planning. And the last thing that we've been doing, and I kind of spoke to it earlier, is a school-based mental health support inventory. So we know some of our sites have listed, they have a mental health service or behavioral health service, but that position may not have been filled yet. So we really want to know what's actually on our sites that students have access to. So we're in the midst of doing that so that we can better allocate our central support services. Next slide. And this is exciting. This year is our first year that we're partnering with Care Solus. And so because we understand the impact of untreated mental health conditions, we've been able to partner with Care Solus. And Care Solus is like a mental health navigation system. So all of our staff, all of our clinicians, our school psychologists, our school counselors and our central social work staff have access to the Care Solus platform. And what it is, is a platform where you can refer anyone in need of a mental health service. And Care Solus does the navigation. So they work with the family and or student to ensure that that student is not only referred, but actually gets to a service. And then we're able to monitor the number of referrals and then the number of students who have actually accessed the service. So we're really excited about that partnership this year with Care Solus. And the cool thing about it is that Care Solus is available to staff too. Staff and families can benefit from the service and it's not dependent on your insurance. So we're really excited for this partnership with Care Solus. And lastly, I will highlight, just as Dr. Chilcot did, a school that showed some significant growth. Next slide. A school that showed some significant growth in their student perception of school connectedness. So we wanted to highlight Hercules Middle School. Hercules Middle School had growth in all grade levels for school connectedness, and you can see the numbers there. And what Hercules had, I'm sorry, Hercules Middle did different last year was they started off and I was able to attend their professional learning and collaboration last year all around students' social emotional wellness and well-being and how we can create affirming spaces in the classrooms where students are acknowledged and students feel like they belong. So they started that last year and they did work throughout their collaboration cycles all around student connectedness and student well-being. And they also partnered with a social emotional provider last year to, again, create affirming spaces, particularly for their African American students as well. And they were able to have growth in school connectedness in every area. So we are looking at what they did and already because of the partnership there, we have expanded that partnership to other sites. And you, and we've used some of the best practices that we've learned from Hercules Middle. And I could highlight other schools, but I am at time. And so we can go into questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, who would like to start with questions? Anyone have questions? Trusty Reckler? Someone have questions to my left? Clark Smith, let's go ahead.
Thank you so much for the presentation. One of the questions that I would have is, did we talk to the students who made gains? So did we specifically go to students who made the jumps and say, what clicked? What happened? What is it? What, what changed for you? That's my question.
That's an excellent question. So I can speak from the academic side. As part of this process, it was sort of how I articulated, we looked at data as a central office. We, you know, drilled down to some of the bright spots, then we went to the principals. But it's definitely a note that the more conversations we're having around student experience, the better off we're going to be. This is as part of, I mean, the IPG is around walking in and doing walkthroughs, not expressly around talking to students. But yes, part of our understanding student experience is making sure that you're actually conversing with those students and those that have made gains and the students in the classrooms that have made gains. So no, not as part of this process, but yes, overall.
Thank you very much. The next question is, when we're looking at these bright spots in the district, are they all using the same curriculum? And I don't know if that makes sense, but like if we're looking at elementary school to elementary school, are they all using the same math program? If we look at elementary school to elementary school, are they all use, okay, so no. Those who are, are there any threads of connect, connection through the sites that are gaining of what they are using? Does that make sense?
That does make sense. Yes. So there's multiple curricula across our district and those bright spots specifically for math and ELA are not the same curriculum, I can tell you that. I didn't sit down and, you know, tabulate how many of each as part of this presentation, but I can say pretty clearly that they are. And in terms of what might be a thread, it really is around a coherent vision of instruction and how that's being led and not just instruction, but how you're folding in the other aspects. So for instance, when Highland was talking about the multicultural fair and putting out books, they were linking that to their ELA instruction. So it was both around their instructional practices and how they were grouping students and interrupting and accelerating student learning, but also how they were supporting the whole child to try to make it a school-wide push around literacy. But that's a specific strategy, but what I would say overall, it's the coherent vision that were, that would be the thread between those different sites. And not to say that the ones that didn't have a three percent gain don't have that as well. There were many great things that happened. We created a threshold of the three percent. But in my talking to principals and, you know, creating the presentation and going through this, there were areas that the principal highlighted where, yeah, this only came out at one or two percent. But really, this is incredible because of X, Y, Z, and we were digging further into the data. It just wasn't, it was too many moving pieces for this particular presentation. But I don't want to say that these are the only bright spots because there were numerous other bright spots across the district. These just happened to one, be the ones that popped up through our protocol and then we followed up on.
Thank you very much. My last question is, Ms. Smith, when we're talking about strategies around climate and culture and the shift that we want to see, are we including conversations with our coaches, our CSSs, our scouts, our volunteers, our yard supervisors, our aides? Because all of those people, among many more that I've forgotten, have, they touch our children, right? So are they being trained on, this is a red flag. If you see this in a kid, make sure that you report it up the chain. This is how you can communicate with the kid who you see is not feeling well or not feeling their best self. Are we doing that type of training at all of those levels?
Yes. So we have a strand for essentially every employee in our district, including our, starting from our administrators, all the way down to our yard supervisors. So last year, we heard a need from our yard supervisor staff that they wanted more training in areas related to social emotional learning and well-being. So we are including them in training and also working with site leaders to allow them some time away so that they can attend training. When we have the official like scope and sequence for all of our groups, I will definitely share it with the board so that you can see what we're doing and then you're welcome to attend the training as well.
Thank you very much. I would love to attend. President Gonzalez, I'm complete.
Thank you. Trusty Reckler?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. First, our S back questions. Oh, it could have been culture and climate. We'll do, that's fine. All right, you're up at the mic. Do you know yet how predictive iReady or STAR was to the S back scores?
I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing, but I think you're asking about if we can see a connection between STAR, iReady and the S back scores?
Correct. Predictive, like iReady and STAR being predictive of what is rolling in, in S back. Correct. Predictive, like iReady and STAR being predictive of what is rolling in, in S back.
Um, I can say that both, um, have, uh, high levels of, uh, uh, predictability around, um. The S back scores sort of embedded in their system. And this is why we always choose a proficiency and, um, a growth goal and a predictive goal. Um, for, um. Um, from iReady and STAR, but in terms of from this particular data, no, I don't have that, like that correlation.
But I'm assuming you will look at that.
Yeah, they are.
So both iReady and STAR, the organizations that own those assessments have done extensive. Predictability analyses between their assessments. And the smarter balanced assessments and they are highly predictive of them. On a more case by case basis, we're now able to see student by student when we work with. Schools and teachers on the data in EduClimber, they can literally see a column with S back ELA. And right next to it, a column with their STAR or iReady from the different windows. And from a more anecdotal perspective of going through that with people as we've launched EduClimber, they are. Highly correlated in our own data as well.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question for Ms. Smith. And it is a bit of a reach, but there's truth in, in all of it. Like, are there correlations or causations between meaningful participation or some of the. Uh, feedback that was received through the Healthy Kids Survey? Constant use of technology and mental health and maybe even attendance and how does that? Get pieced apart and. Dissected because there's. Uh, you know, there's a lot of evidence or doctors and researchers are talking about the connection between tech. Constant tech and, you know, your, your outlook and how you feel.
So yeah, there's definitely a lot of research out right now around the correlation between technology, more specifically. Social media use and mental wellness. So how students perceive themselves, how students. Um, affirm themselves and how they believe. They are to be based on how much technology, uh, they're exposed to. The second question you said was around attendance and.
Well, maybe that being a factor in this. I mean, really what I'm digging at is, are you guys aware of this and? You know, like what? What strategies or what, how do you think you would tackle such a big hairy, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. So thanks for acknowledging it's, it's a huge issue to tackle right now. But what, what I can tell you is that last year when we were looking at our attendance data and disaggregating it by reason code. We had a lot of excessively excused absences, which I kind of presented to the board last year. And what was hard is that the way in which we code attendance is excused and it says illness, right? And we were not. Coding it in a way to see, is it excused because a student is having anxiety right now, right? And needs to be away from school. Is it excused because a student wanted to take a mental health day? Or is it just excuse because there was more of a, an illness that was more viral, right? And so this year, what we're doing in our A two A system, uh, to disaggregate our attendance is looking at the codes and. Having our scouts and having our attendance clerks reach out to families after they have been out and asking them. We see that you were ill. Can you tell us more so that we can try to identify? What is happening for a student and then link them to any service that they may need to eliminate the barriers. Of, uh, getting to school and attending school. So that's what we're trying to do this year. And so we're reducing the amount of codes that are used and being more strategic about how we're coding. Students when they are absent so that we can then think about, uh, our interventions more strategically.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Phillips?
Thank you. I just want to follow up on what you just said around the coding. Um, of the absences regarding illness. My question is. Is there a penalty? If a parent tells the truth? And, and this is what I mean by that, just to put it in context. So. I know a parent. Who periodically will give his kid, our kids, he has four. Three of them are in the district right now. I know a parent who periodically will give his kids a mental health day, right? But there really is no excused absence that I know of for a mental health day. So his kids are sick. You know this guy. Everyone in here knows him. But if he were to tell the truth. And say. You know, they just needed a break. The little one was crying at school yesterday. He was stressed out or just needed a break. Would there be a penalty? Would the man have to go to the SAB review or anything like that? What would happen if the parent told the truth?
We want all of our parents to tell the truth and no, there's no penalty. So you could be excused if there is a mental. Reason, if it's, it's a mental illness, like I'm having a, I need a mental break. I need a day and. Cause you could get physically ill if you are not taking care of your mental health. So there would be no penalty. Uh, instead, we would ask questions and try to support you and your family. Um, to access services, but there's no penalty for telling us that my child needs a break. My child is having anxiety. My child is overwhelmed. They aren't able to do school today. We want all of our families to give us this information. So again, that we can connect children and families to resources because that's what's most important.
Follow-up questions to that. There are communities. And this guy I was talking about, he's from one of them. There are communities who have had issues around CPS and their kids. And they avoid saying too much. And answering too many questions. Because they don't want anybody to come get their kids. So how do we deal with that when we're doing the questioning that you're talking about? And you start asking them one too many questions and then that guy's like, I gotta go. How do you deal with that?
That's a excellent question and we deal with that through education. So reeducating our families about why we're asking the questions and also reeducating around the role of child. And family services or child protective services as we know it. Because the role of CPS is not to come in and take your kid if you're keeping them home for a mental health day. The role is to ensure that the parents are receiving education and the student is doing well. And not neglected either physically or mentally. And so if you are advocating for your child and giving them a mental health day. CPS is not coming to take your child because you want to advocate for their mental health services. And their mental health need. So I think it's all about education.
Oh, can I also add to that? Um, I think, cause one of the things that she said was also educating. Even us as educators as well, because, um, connecting when I heard, um, trustee Reckler say. What's causing the, um, anxiety? It's social media specifically, not so much technology. You know, that's how we access the, the social media. But anxiety is one of those newer things that we need to all become more educated on. And I would say it's not just our students, but it's our adults as well. And so we're doing something overall. Um, like Ms. Smith described in terms of having strategies for us as adults. Cause sometimes we need mental health days and it's okay. So de-stigmatizing is really key.
And just to add, I was trying to remember if it became actual ed code or, because it was a Senate bill for a while, but it is actual ed code now. That students are excused for mental health needs. So our California education code is recognizing that as an excused absence.
Okay. We're gonna do comments.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna do comments after. Uh, Ms. Smith. In the data from the mental health indicators, this might be a secret question, but, um.
There's no.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's a seventh grade, grade seven, grade nine, grade 11th and non-trad. Is that, what does that mean?
Non-traditional schools, so our alternative programs Greenwood, uh, Vista Virtual.
Got it. Okay. Could we get that data disaggregated even further? Like, could we, could we see like the comparison between our virtual school, mental health compared to our other traditional schools?
I can work on that for you.
Thank you. I'd be really interested to seeing the information for the virtual school as well. Sorry, I'm going into comments, but, uh, thank you. That'd be great. That's my only question. Um, board, we'll move to comments. Um, we'll start with trustee Phillips.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna pace myself. I have kind of a lot to say in a, a short period of time. I'm gonna start here. Um, Allison Mackler asked me, I saw her this weekend and she asked me. If it was okay to talk about what winning looks like to me. And so my personal vision for kids, uh, in this district is that every child attends a safe school where they're engaged and able to achieve. Academically. That's my vision. That's what it's been. So I looked online to see if Allison was watching this meeting. She's not watching right now. Hopefully she watches later or somebody says, hey, he was up there talking about you. What I heard tonight, part of what I heard tonight, that's what winning looks like. There have been some serious strides. That's what winning. Looks like. It's not spread out throughout the district. And we need to address that because when we look at geographically where those strides are happening. They are disproportionately in the outer or more suburban areas of the district, right? Uh, but that said, you know, I want to give a shout out to Richmond High, for example, and other schools who made great gains, but. That's, um, part of what winning looks like. Um, I want to address one more thing in this short period of time that I have. Um. I. Generally distrust CPS like a lot of people. And it's for a reason because they take black kids. And so we can message for ourselves, but we can't message for them and we should be very careful about that.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments? Clerk, clerk Smith, let's go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate all the learning that we receive from. All the work that you've done, um, gathering this information and the data. Um. I do want to say that there are lots of bright spots and when we do, a gain is a gain, right? So even if it didn't show up on your map, um, there are schools that gained. Most schools probably hopefully gained. But I also want to see what happened to the, those that stayed the same and those that fell backwards. Or those that went backwards. What are we doing and how are we concentrating and how are we focusing on those schools? The ones that stayed the same from year to year and the ones that went backwards. So I want to make that part of the conversation. I'm sure it is, but part of the presentation also to the board. To let us know what's happening in those areas. Um, when we talk about gains, I really do want to. Drill down and have a conversation with the student who wasn't and now is. What changed for them? Cause I think that's where we can get a lot of understanding about what's happening at our sites, what's happening in our homes, what's happening in our communities. There are a lot of factors that go into students not being able to yet and then being able to now. So I just, and that includes the, you know, growth mindset, that includes having people who believe in them and cheerlead for them. All of these things go into having students gain something. Um, security, mental health, security, uh, agency, um, academic growth. The other thing I want to encourage us to do is give those students agency a voice. Students need to be able to tell their teachers, tell their parents, tell their caregivers, you know what? I'm not feeling it. This is what I need and not just I'm not feeling it, but this is what I need to help me. So giving the same agency that IEP students have, and they have a great agency. IEP students, if you talk to a student who has IEP, they can tell you everything in their IEP and what you are, are and are not supposed to do. And they let you know it's a great agency. So if we could have that agency all over with our students, I think it would add to the conversation and the elevation. I'm complete.
Thank you. trustee Christian?
Yes, I want to thank you for the presentation. Uh, it's, it's well put, uh. And the information is that's on here. And, um, I just want to say, you know. When I just look at, you know, the, the mental health aspect of it, uh, that's the wellbeing of all of our students, making sure that. They are able to function. Um. You know, another part that you might look at, our students might be hungry, you know, so they need food to. Uh, be able to do their classwork and, uh, and, and be focused. So, um. So we want to look at, you know, the wellbeing of all of our students and making sure all of our students, uh. Uh, um, receiving the, the, the necessary resources. And so, yeah, this, I just want to say, you know, thank you guys for the, uh, survey. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. trustee Reckler?
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. So first, thank you for the presentation and congratulations that schools. To schools that had big leaps and congratulations to schools that didn't because there was something in every school that worked. And, um, I, I want to appreciate that. I know people are working very, very, very hard. I am interested in how you unpack this though, and I, I'd love to hear in the next update. Like what did you, you know, like really, what did you discover? What kind of synergies did you find or, you know, like commonalities? Or, you know, I, I am interested in your unpacking thought process of what this tells you and practice. And what could possibly spread and be improved system-wide. So I think that's important. Um, and then, um, bilingual AIDS comes up again. So there is a real need for bilingual AIDS throughout the system. It's in all, it's in a lot of the SPSAs. One school had success because of it. So I think that that's really important to look at bilingualism. And having AIDS and others who are bilingual. And then, once again, I am really suspicious about tech. I have to say, there's like a great side to it and there is a dark side to it. And I don't know for sure, but I, I do believe that it's not only social media, but it's the amount of time. Kids actually spend on machines that affects their health and wellbeing. Um, and so coming back to that again, once I see, you know, kids spending fifty or a hundred percent of their day on a machine. It makes me really think about how they're interacting with each other, how they're interacting with other adults, how they're, you know, it's. It disrupts the relationship pattern. Um, and I'm just aware of it and I hope you are too. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for my comments, thank you for the presentations. Uh, one, I'm really just very skeptical about the S back test anyways. As an educator, I'll just want to say I hate it. One, I think it's racist. Two, I think it's not useful in many ways. Um, I appreciate the way that you presented it, but in the future I would love to also see it in comparison to iReady and STAR. Which the data I value more because it's what really our educators are using in the classroom, what principals are using in schools. Um, and what really gives me a more in-depth and realistic understanding of where our students are. Um, I know that this was an S back presentation, so it has nothing to do with what you presented. Uh, but obviously it doesn't tell me really what the academic. Uh, but obviously it doesn't tell me really what the academic achievement is of the schools. Um. Anyone watching and you all in front of me could tell me I'm wrong. Totally okay with that. Uh, but ultimately, you know, if it's, it's given once a year, right? A lot of this time, students are not used to taking it, right? And our English language learners have a lot of struggles with the aspect tests because of the way that is designed. Um, so to me, what we really need to focus is on the iReady and the Star. Um, and, and looking at the segregated for that. With that said, just taking the aspect for what it is, I mean, we saw some amazing bright spots. I agree. Richmond High School was one of the only high schools that saw that huge increase in ELA. I mean, that's pretty amazing, right? Especially with what I just said about that test, uh, and thinking of once, right? Uh, middle college. Uh, and for math, I mean, what we saw in West County Mandarin, uh, and of one bright spot that I just want to point out, Bayview, that has been our lowest performing school in both math and ELA for I think, what, six years? They still have growth in three, three percent in both math and ELA. I mean, that's really cool, right? So I did want to appreciate that. Uh, and thank you, Director Smith, for sending that data. I'm also curious to see how our virtual school is doing with mental health because of what trustee Reckler mentioned. So thank you. Okay, board. Oh, sorry, I just see cop, I didn't see you. Please go ahead.
It's okay. So I'd say thank you for the presentation and it was really mind opening, uh, mind opening to see all of the data regarding mental health. And as a student myself, seeing everyone, uh, seeing this, seeing all the data about like, um, if they're like thinking of committing suicide or just all of this overall sadness that they're feeling. I feel like I would want to see more about like, why are they feeling this sad? I want to see more about like, why they're feeling this way? And then I want to see how that can be shown or like how that could be seen in the strategies in response to that. Because uh, overall, like all of these strategies are great, but I want to see something more direct and less vague because of how important um, uh, our, our wellbeing is in, in the school system. And as a student myself, like, um, I feel like if uh, there was more like strategies regarding specific uh, targets about like, um, why they're specifically feeling that type of way would be great to see. And then, and uh, something that I want to see incorporated into the strategies in response to all of these statistics.
Thank you. Um, okay, board, that was our last item for the night. Thank you so much for the presentation again. Um, now we are gonna move to comments from the board. So we're gonna have three minutes, uh, for board members. So we'll wait for the clock. And I think trustee Phillips would like to get started. Um, and then, do we pull anything from consent? No, okay. Sorry. I'm so used to always having someone from consent, um, and we don't tonight. Um, okay. Uh, trustee Phillips, are you ready? You can start with comments.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to actually extend my comment from last time, uh, regarding the CPS issue. As we're having conversation uh, with our parents, um, about why their children are out, the whole illness conversation that we just had. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that that is a safe space. Because if we're really trying to get the information from them, and I believe that we are, right? I believe everything that you're saying. Um, we want to make sure that they feel free to actually tell us. And then even though there's no penalty, there also is this thing hanging behind. Because if you're talking to them, you're a mandated reporter, right? So you can ask one too many questions and then end up reporting somebody to CPS. I'm not saying that if there's a child that's being neglected, that you shouldn't make the report that is legally mandated. But what I am saying is we should not be creating situations where we're telling people it's safe to talk to us and telling them to speak to us openly and then turning around and perpetuating what has traditionally happened, uh, with a lot of kids, you know, in this community. So I know we have to do it. I know that it's important. I just want to make sure that as we do it, we do it as tactfully uh, and as safely as we can. So we're building the trust that we need to get where we're trying to go. The second thing that I want to say um, to, on this evening is in regard to the test results that we just saw. And I know that that's more than one person. And I know that this uh, has been building for a while. But Dr. Hurst, I want to say thank you. And I'm gonna tell you, I, I want to say thank you. And I'm gonna say a little inside joke, okay? You're acting like the superintendent. And I appreciate it. I really do. Your feet? You're getting them under you? And if this is what's going to continue, I'm truly glad you're here. Last thing I want to say is to President Gonzalez Hoi. Depending on what time this technology committee meets, if you are going to appoint a board member, um, I, I would like to actually serve on it. Uh, but if it meets during the middle of the day, I'm at work. I can't do it. But if there is a way, um, I do have an interest and I do think that it is extremely important and I do want to support the work. Um, and I have supported in the past. So thank you, everybody, uh, for a great meeting.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Trustee Reckler, do you have any comments?
Sure, I have a few things. So first, for the student trustees, I have an opportunity for you. Um, and also for the all student congress, and it's actually for all students in our district. But since you are sitting here and you are student leaders, you are perfect for this. It is the twenty twenty-three Student Leadership Summit. It is hosted by Children Now. It used to be hosted by Ed one hundred, but it has turned over to a larger organization with greater impact. It is open to all California students age thirteen plus with an interest in leadership and creating change. So you are right in the ballpark and it is also online. So um, low barriers to entry. So I'll send that out to you and hope that you share it across the district. Um, second is, I understand in mid-September, they're releasing a new COVID booster that is going to be somewhat effect, more effective against this new variant. Supposed to be in mid-September. I encourage people to get vaccinated and get your flu shot as well. Um, and then finally, I want to come back again to the tech plan and encourage everybody to read page twenty-one in the tech plan for, this was like, for me, the entire, everything about the, a plan was on this one page. And it's how many kids are spending time on computers in classrooms, which I was alarmed at, I have to say. But then underneath the student responses of what they want out of their education. And there's some really big things here that the board should pay attention to. Um, financial literacy. Um, you know, so maybe there is a mandatory class about how to be financially literate. Career skills pathways. Uh, this was really interesting. Pathways other than college and all post-high school options, trade school, especially for first generation students, which I thought, I found interesting. In many ways, is college not for first generation students? Is that what that means? I don't know. That, that needs to be unpacked a little for me. Reading and understanding important documents, that's really critical thinking skills is what they're asking for. And help with scholarships and college applications. Um, so I found this to be very interesting. And then, I mean, is there a class or what tech do WCCUSD students need to know to get out of here? Is it AI? Is it coding? Is it digital literacy? Is it computational thinking? Is it like, is there a requirement that we should be looking at past the A to G? I don't know. Is it missed and disinformation? I'm not really, I'm not really sure, but this whole discussion um, about the tech plan, you know, it actually could have even have been a study session. Um, there was a lot in here and it's very interesting to me. So um, I'm glad you're gonna be on the tech team and I'm gonna send you some of my uh, comments.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Christian, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah. Once again, is, uh, I wanted to say, you know, thank you for everyone for, you know, the presentation this evening. It was all well put together. Um, you know, as we push forward, you know, we, you know, you know, what we put down, we, we gotta make it happen, make it reality. And so, uh, it's a lot of challenges before us. I, I, I look at it as rebounding. You know, I, you know, we rebounded. We, we have a good team, I believe, you know, at this point. And I believe, you know, the right people are in the right place at, at this time to help this district to go further and uh, and to be better. So uh, I just want to motivate, encourage all of us, just keep on moving. You know, uh, you know, the board, all of us here and staff, everybody, you know, it's, it's so much to do. You know, one of the things I, I've done so far, and I, and I mentioned this to trustee Smith Folds, uh, uh, I, I mentor in the student up here at DeJohn Middle School. And you know, I miss doing that. Really, I do, you know, because I used to do all of that. And so I'm mentoring a, a student up here that's kind of, you know, on, on the low, but I'm motivating him that he can be successful. And I challenged him to go to the next level. And so, um, so I'm taking my time out. Which I don't mind. I, it is, you know, at least I can help one person. If I help one, you know, you know, uh, I, I done a good job. So, uh, but I really, you know, want us to rebound, push forward, you know, um, be shakers, move shakers, you know, you know, you know, um, and so, so everybody, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Uh, clerk Smith Folds?
Thank you so very much. We are into the fourth week of school. We have back to school night for elementary schools coming up. So everyone, please, uh, make sure that you can try to get to your sites. Uh, uh, back to school night. It's very important. It helps set a foundation for a good year with your teachers, your sites, your um, other parents that are in, in the, in the same classroom as your students. So that's always important to go to back to school night. The other thing that I would like to make sure that we highlight is agency for our students. Our students need to be able to speak up for themselves at every level, including TK. TK all the way to adult ed, they need to be able to speak for themselves around health, speak for themselves around academics, speaks for themselves around their needs, their wants, their supports and the resources that they require. So um, one of the things that we can do is instead of asking someone, you know, what's wrong, we can say, how can I help you? That level of unreasonable hospitality, I think would allow us to really shift our district. It's, we should be a service in all departments. So one of the things that we should always say is, how can I help you? Um, the other thing is I want to make sure that we're all keeping a focus on how we're preparing our kids when they're not with us. I just traveled to the East Coast and I got to compare how some of our students on this side are doing. You know, across the country. And there are things that we are doing very well. Our students have a high level of diversity, so they can work with a lot of different people. It's not just black and white. Our students have the ability to work with people from all over the world because they see people from all over the world in our district. That leads me to highlighting our most marginalized students. And how are we making sure our most marginalized students are incorporated, prepared and part of our system? Those are newcomers, those are our, our black and brown students, those are our special ed students, those are ELL students. What are we doing to intentionally focus on this, those students and their experience in our schools at every level? So I think that we really need to make sure that's part of our board discussion. I do want to take a minute and say thank you for a learning meeting. We learned. And I think all of our school board meetings should be learning meetings. So we were able to learn a lot tonight and then our community was able to learn a lot tonight. So I think that's huge. Um, Dr. Hurst, I would love to see a one pager of all of our learnings tonight, just so we can put that out to the community. This is what happened at the board meeting. These are the learnings that we got and then we can throw that to our community. And we can study it ourselves, because I think it's important for us to know and have those talking points when we go out to sites. I also finally would like to see if we can have our uh, student trustees come on some site visits with us this round to make sure that they are able to see what's going on at other schools. So they can then have agency of voice when they're talking about what other students need. Finally, thank you, President Gonzalez Hoi, for the city and schools tour. I think that that's gonna be amazing. I think that you're doing an excellent job incorporating the school district and the cities and the cities into the school district. We are one and we have to move in unity. Thank you uh, very much, everyone. I am complete.
Thank you, clerk Smith Folds. Trustee Cop, David.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for the presentations and all of the information you, uh, that was prepared for us tonight. I'd like to also say thank you because like, as a second word meeting, I'm a little rocky, a little shy, obviously speaking to the public. So that's honestly, thank you for everyone's patience on that. And one thing that I like, want to say that I've learned from today is like, this is, um, was just said previously, that as this was a learning meeting, I would really want to see more in, um, because all of this information that was was related to obviously like student voices. I feel like most of this, most of the details that we received today uh, can be heavily impacted from what we hear from the students. And then as a student, a student trustee, I feel like I, I have, I have the obligation. And then I have, I also, I, I obviously want to provide that information out there about like, what we need and how we can provide for their needs. I, I would like to hear how, I would like to get, I would like to gain a better way to see um, these needs and then obviously put that out there because of importance of that overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cypress said, do you have any comments? Go ahead.
Um, I would like to thank everyone as well, just for the contributions to this meeting and being able to educate everyone in a safe space where we all are able to talk and ask questions and contribute personally. I appreciate seeing the technology plan today because I was one of the committee members who spoke on that. And I did see some of my ideas incorporated into the plan, which made me happy to see because I did advocate really hard for a student perspective in a group of mainly adults who um, don't understand what students see for technology from their perspective. So I was happy to include insight and information about what students want and need from the technology and the digital life and the responsibilities of digital literacy for younger kids as well. I'm glad that that's something that we are talking about now. Um, I think that wraps it up for me. I'm just very happy to see everyone contributing and the knowledge that I'm gaining from these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, for my comments first, I want to thank Ms. Chamberlain for your words about Sandy. Um, I just want to say that uh, Sandy was an incredible advocate for our community. I'm going to miss her dearly. I used to see her quite often because we were neighbors. She'd always be out in her garden, taking care of her garden. She'd see me, she would stop me for quite a while. Uh, my wife and I used to take walks at night and she, my wife would leave me because Sandy would hold me back and want to talk to me always about what classified staff was doing, how we could support them and how could we support our students. Uh, she worked with us on the parcel tax committee and she was an incredible advocate. So she'll be greatly missed. Um, uh, one thing that I did want to mention to the board and to the public, um, we're gonna do something new in the next few board meetings in September and October with the support of uh, Ms. Neely Johnson, her department and Dr. Hurst. At every board meeting, we're gonna do a walkthrough of a different curriculum. Um, and the reason why, I'm hoping that you all are bought into this because one, we make these big decisions about curriculum that is obviously directly impacting the learning of students on a daily basis. And a lot of the time, we don't know what it, it, that is. So at every board meeting, we're gonna do a small walkthrough. We're gonna have a presentation of that curriculum. Uh, and I hope that it's something that we enjoy and we can do moving forward. Um, and I please hope that you'll send your feedback to us. Um, and the first one, I think it's going to be science. Um, looking for confirmation from someone. No, okay. Well, it's gonna be one of our, one of our elementary curriculums uh, in September. Uh, Ms. Neely Johnson is running over.
September twentieth.
September twentieth is the first one. So thank you. Uh, the big, the city schools tour, thank you staff for uh, being open to the idea. Board, I hope that you'll be there to participate. We're gonna invite all of our city council members, as Dr. Hur, Hurst mentioned. Uh, one of the things that I think I've learned in this position, because a lot of elected officials reach out to me, uh, so I'm sure maybe, maybe you reach out to you, is that they only get to hear the negatives most of the time about our schools. And I think that it's important to show them all the amazing things that are actually happening in our schools. We see it every time we go to schools. We see it, um, the, some of you that send your kids, right? Uh, and there's amazing things happening at every single one of them. So the idea is to show that, to show them the amazing things that are happening in their community school. Uh, and I would love if every single one of you is there because we're able to make those connections too and ask hopefully our cities to partner with us on things that not just we need, but they also need themselves. Um, and then lastly, we have a budget update coming up on September twentieth, um, which I think is very much needed. So thank you, Ms. Moses, for preparing for that. Um, as we're getting all these requests, I want everybody to also know what's also happening with our budget. So thank you. Okay, everyone, uh, this was the end of our meeting. Our next board meeting is on September twentieth here at DeJohn. I adjourn us at nine twenty-four PM. Thank you so much.